Mr. Burrow, might you have a high school presentation?
Alright.
Very good.
Everyone here is for public comment, not for the high school. So, you, originally when I proposed this, I said, "Let's do a tour." Didn't have enough time to really put together a tour, but wanted to, can you, I don't see a board. Okay, wanted to give you a preview of what next year at the high school will look like when it comes to what the students are doing, what the teachers are doing, what they're doing now a little bit as well. But the first couple of slides will be about what our Guide to Program, which I know all of you have seen, will start to look like. I did promise you last year it would start to be interactive, which you will see our CASH students are creating it to be interactive. We've got one more coming right now. Hurry. I get control of it? So, the first one, the first thing that you'll see is our next year course guide. Like I said, you have already seen it. You can give it a click. So, this is what it looks like for our students this year, and even on the website, this is a working document. So if we do change something, or we add a video to it, it uploads right away to the website, and everyone has public access to it. So if you just scroll down a little bit, you can keep going for a little bit. It is very basic, as you see. The goal was, this time around, to make it, like I said, interactive, so the kids know what they're looking at. I don't want, I want the kids to be able to look at this guide, and parents look at this guide, and say, "Okay, this is what I'm interested in. This is what I want to take." And that's the ultimate goal. I want this to be kid-centered and kid-friendly. I guess I know the adults, the parents need to know what the kids are looking at, everything else, but when the student walks into their annual review every single year with their counselor, I want them to have a plan in their head. So, if you exit out of that for a second, and go back to, not the second, the third one down, the checklist. We then created this checklist for students. So on this checklist, it does have ninth, 10th, 11th, 12th grade. Can you zoom in on that? There you go. So it had, so this is for ninth grade. So it has your required, your required classes each year, which is right above. And then, below it, it has all of the electives that students are able to take. And it's under business, English, facts, languages, performing arts, social studies, technology, STEAM, and so they're able to see an overall map of what is offered to them within ninth grade. Because, within that guide that you just saw, some classes are offered ninth through 12, some classes are offered 11 through 12. It all varies on the content and the curriculum that's being taught. So this cheat sheet, let's say, allows parents and students to see what is offered in a simpler version. So they can take a look at this and be like, "Okay, I want to do adolescent psych." "Well, what am I learning about?" Now it's, let's link it from adolescent psych right back to the guide. Goes right to where it pulls up the course description of adolescent psych. They're able to read it. At some point have a video, not all videos are done, but they'll hear from the teacher about what they're going to be learning as well. Make sense so far? So, what Alice said, Miss Leonardo, if you go back to the previous one, you go, click on the second one. This is a draft of what next year, and hopefully years to come, will look like. Again, it becomes much more user and visually friendly. You can keep scrolling through. If not all done, it just spruces things up. I'd like to see it not necessarily in a Google Doc form, but now something for everyone to grab when they walk in, and take a look at what we offer. I think we, we need to do, like Randy has always said, a better job in promoting what we offer. Because we offer a lot more things than some of the bigger schools do. You can keep going. The one part of this I wanted to show you again, keep going, keep going, it's almost at the end. Keep going. Is right here, is pathways. So, we're going to start to show the students, they may not be New York State-approved pathways, which are very, very difficult if you get into the nitty-gritty with them, but pathways within CA that students can be successful in figuring out what they want to do. So, now, it's broken down even further of like, "Okay, this is what I'm taking in ELA, math, science, social studies for ninth grade. And then if I want to work," scroll down just a hair, "on my business pathway," which I have my business teacher here behind me. These are your electives. This is the way you can go. You don't necessarily have to go this way, though. So, for this pathway that Alice and I, Alice really quickly threw together, you take entrepreneurship and consumerism together, and then you move on to business law and market. So you're getting all these different experiences within this set pathway. We would have a media pathway, we would have an English pathway, a social studies pathway, because we offer all those different electives that go along with these subjects. So that's kind of where I want to see the high school go, where it becomes more student-friendly, and they have an idea of what they want to be doing. And it's okay to break off from this pathway. The difference between these pathways and New York State pathways, if you ask Rocco, that if you choose to do, let's say, our manufacturing processes, advanced manufacturing pathway, that's certified through New York State, you are more or less stuck in that pathway, all nine through 12. So it's either you get it, which in five years we haven't had any, but we have one this year that's going to get it, or you break off and you have to, you're no longer getting a New York State certified pathway, but you have more options then. We can go back to the slideshow. So, like I said, what's new with the path? Interactive with links, and I'll show it to you in a second. Because Allison Leonardo is going to show you what she's been doing with CASH. We have all brand-new courses that are listed out. We are missing a couple because we just added a couple. And like I showed you, the creation of pathways. You can click on the next slide, because I'm terrible at this thing. You're just gonna be that guy. Okay. So, these courses are new next year to CA. So these are all courses that our teachers and staff members created. I mean, the first one is very out of the box, which is Golf Course Management Operations. He's running it in the spring. It's actually a math teacher that's overseeing him. A math teacher that has an extra associate's degree in golf course management. So his plan is to do it in the spring, and for the first three months, really talk about the operations part of the golf course. And then the next two or three months, go to different golf courses. So take the students to Rainbow, to Thunderheart, to courses that are in this area. Let them meet the manager, whether it be the catering manager, or the golf, you know, pro, and have them get some hands-on experience of what it's like to run a golf course. The three that are highlighted, Mr. DiMaggio will talk about in a second, those are three brand-new business classes. And then, I mean, you can take a look at all the different things that we are going to be starting to offer. That last one, interior design, yes, it is a facts, a facts class, but our brand-new art teacher, Ms. Ramondo, will be, she's got a really love for interior design. She's the one who designed the student lounge upstairs, the senior lounge upstairs. So she's actually going to be trying to flip the classroom. So take teachers that want their classroom updated, and allow her students in interior design, come in, interview this teacher, find out what she really wants in the classroom, and then revamp the whole classroom. So it's a whole year-long hands-on project. Her goal is that next year to create interior design two, where they're doing bigger projects. Any questions so far? I'm handing over to my teachers and my students, who are all sitting in.
So, let me throw.
Yes, go right ahead.
Have we integrated this with any of the BOSIs or new visions, opportunities?
So, a lot of the stuff that we do can integrate right into it. So I know a lot of the stuff that Rocco does with manufacturing processes, woodworking stuff, it does go directly to the BOSIs.
So what, for the parent students that want to look at BOSIs and new visions opportunities, where do they go for that information?
To their counselor.
Does the counselor have some sort of, something like this?
Yep. And the counselor usually knows within their eighth grade, ninth grade review, that that's one of their plans. Like, "Hey, I really love cosmetology," which is a BOSIs run program.
Right.
And so, the counselor's job is, within their annual review, talk to them about what courses they need to take their freshman and sophomore year that will help lead them and guide them into whatever they're running their junior, senior.
Maybe I missed it, but this is available where? On the website, though?
This is on the website, yes.
On our website?
Correct. The Guide to Program is available on our website.
So I guess my question is, BOSIs, opportunities, and information is also on the website as well?
If you go, if he wants to click back a slide, and you go to the, yep, go to that guide, go to like the fifth page down. Keep going. So right there, Questar three, so what, and by the way, our students created this guide. I didn't do it. Our publishing class did it. So if you keep scrolling down, this is Career Technical, and then all the links are right there for all of those questions.
And they go out to Questars.
They'll go, if you click on it, it goes right to Questar's website.
One thing also, too, would be something like interior design. I think our, you know, facilities committee, I think, would like to be, or welcome some of that and some input as to what the students want and want to see here. However, we can help that, and they can help us do things here. That would be outstanding.
I know Mr. DiMaggio already asked me.
She's asked if he could start coming to the facility committee meetings.
If he could present, yeah.
I would like to see that senior lounge. We all saw that senior lounge when it was still concrete. So I would love to see it, what it looks like now.
Wish I had pictures. There's an air-hunk table up there, there's a Nintendo Switch. I do have pictures, I think, somewhere.
Just forget to share it.
I will share it. Alright, any other questions for me until I hand it over to my students and some of my staff members? So I'm going to first have Rich DiMaggio talk about his current entrepreneurship class, which he will continue, and then also his three new classes, Marketing, Consumerism, and Business Law for next year.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Hi.
May it please the court. So my name is Rich DiMaggio. I teach entrepreneurship. A very quick rendition of who I am. I came up with an idea about 10 years ago. I didn't know what I was doing. I had no idea. I never had the grades to get into RPI, to be perfectly honest, and yet I won first place against a bunch of engineers at their RPI incubator. And in launching my own product, I learned a whole lot. And I, from the bottom of my heart, tried to teach those lessons to my kids. Sometimes I use a canned program, just kind of to teach me how to slow it down a little bit. I came at the end of October. I have an amazing class of AP students that just soak it up. And the one thing that they will all agree upon is they've never taken a course like this before. When you have an idea, and everybody has an idea, we don't know where to turn. If we build a table in shop class, we at least have an idea of what a table looks like. We want to build, I remember in art class, we used to build ashtrays back in the day, right? Put your little finger down. We don't do that anymore. But the fact of the matter is, we had an idea what an ashtray looks like. So, when I looked at my wife one day and I said, "What do you want to do this weekend?" And she looked back at me and she said, "I want to buy somebody a seeing eye dog." My wheels started spinning, because I was, my wife is blind, she lost her eyesight, and I was the quintessential, I needed the adrenaline rush. I hiked, climbed, fished, you named it. And I spent the next 10 years trying to figure out how to turn it into something. And that is what I'm doing with my kids right now. So we started out with a coffee shop, doing demographic studies. I said, "You know, Colgate spends millions of dollars figuring out what shade of blue to make their toothpaste, and yet the vast majority of businesses out there, they don't even do that. That's why Kmart isn't there anymore." They, they don't do their research. When it's about you and not your customer, it's a hobby. It's no longer a business. And to make any business, you have to pivot sometimes away from your personal needs. So, I teach kids how to create something out of nothing. We've been working on the coffee shop, and we are going to segue into the tech end of that. I wish I had more time. I wish I got here in September, but I didn't. So I've been pushing them along and doing, trying to teach them how to think outside the box, how to accept failure. Edison failed 17,000 times before he got the light bulb to go on. You know, I wonder how many people looked at and said, "Loser." I bet quite a few. And, and I also am a firm believer in group effort and team. No great company, the next great company that hasn't been invented yet, takes a team. And so, everybody's good at something, nobody's good at everything, and I teach my students that, too. You're not good at something, you hand it over to a team member who is. I was a consumer protection lawyer for a long time. I was a bankruptcy lawyer. I was one of the beginning members of a group called the National Association of Consumer Advocates. I wrote two, one of my books was a top 2,000 Amazon bestseller on credit repair, and the other book was on dealing with collection agencies. I was trying to help the people that were filing bankruptcies, but my number-one customer was mortgage brokers. And I didn't do my customer research, because nobody taught me how to do it, but I salvaged it anyway. And, what are kids going to meet? They're going, well, let me rephrase that. They're going to be taken advantage of by car dealers. They're going to be taken advantage of by credit card companies. FICO score, there's not one person in the world knows what a FICO score, how it's calculated, but I will tell you that the more cash you pay and the fewer open accounts, the lower your FICO score. You are going to be penalized if you try to be a good American and pay cash. And I personally think that the system is very unfair, and I want kids to know, to be fully aware about the people out there, the businesses and the entities that are going to try and take advantage of them. That's going to be consumerism. I'm going to do a deep dive into the games that credit card companies, Capital One, and others play on people. Business law, we're going to go into the coal mines, but I'm also going to teach them child labor. But I'm also going to teach them, "You get a speeding ticket, now what?" So, we're going to do some stuff on antitrust in Google. And finally, marketing. I have great resources on marketing. I'm going to be dealing with, my project is going through another coding, the eighth coding right now, and I'm dealing with a wonderful marketing company, and I have tons of resources. So, once you have an idea, what do you do with it then? And that's me.
So, any questions for Mr. DiMaggio?
Where do I sign up?
You have to talk to Mr. Burrow about that. And by the way, one thing that my student said was, "I've never taken a class like this before." And you won't again. It could be a credit class. I don't know how to give college credit for this, but they're not going to learn about it anywhere else. All three of those classes, four of those classes could be, could be college credit classes. But hey, it's thinking outside the box. Couple of them said, "Oh, can my parents come in?" Sure, bring your idea. I'd love to deal with businesses in the community, because businesses in the community, when they have a problem and they're struggling right now, they have no idea where to turn to. So that's next on the bucket list. And with that, I'm going to ditch out, because I have a long commute home. Thank you, everybody.
Could I just ask you?
Of course.
Just to, don't be scarce. I think we're mighty impressed with you.
Oh, thank you.
And, and it sounds fantastic. It's almost like, it's too bad we couldn't broadcast your classes.
I would, I would love to.
All of us could.
I want people, I want kids, and adults, too, to know how you do it. You know, we grow up, gee, the rich get richer. It's not really true. If you have two nickels together, but you have a good idea, you're going to make it. You just have to knock on the right doors. And, and people give up. Don't expect family and friends to be on your side when you try to do things the other way. One of the greatest authors on this stuff is, her name is Jen Sincero, and she wrote a book. It's a yellow-covered book called You Are a Badass, and it's fantastic. And she talks about the struggles of being an entrepreneur. She said, "The universe will come down on you like an old Italian mother when you try to break the rules." And I'm saying to myself, "I know this," because I have an old Italian mother. Everybody, I welcome anybody into any of my classes. You know, you want to do like this thing for the community or whatever, there's a lot of people suffering right now, and I'd love to show them how really to, to take that idea that they have and run with it.
Well, I worked with teenagers in residential care for many years. And we, we would talk about hard skills and soft skills, and where our kids would have difficulty later on. And we would do the hard skills, and how do you make a bed, and how do you, I don't know. Do you say, how do you drive, or what, what does that look like? But invariably, it was the soft skills that they had difficulty with once they got out on their own. It was, how do you choose the right person to live with? How do you get a credit card without getting ripped off? How do you get a cell phone without getting Verizon?
Right.
AT&amp;T, or any of them. So those kind of things that you're talking about are really the things that trip up a lot of kids I, I know of.
And the other thing, if I can keep going for a moment. Kids forget, and adults, too. What do they love to do? Right? When Julie Crone, the horse jockey, was interviewed by Barbara Walters, and she said, "When I, when people ask me what I do for a living, and I tell them, 'I ride horses.' People ask me what I do for fun, and I tell them, 'I ride horses.'" Now, would you ever tell a kid that they can go out and have a career riding horses? And chances are, no. So, one last story. My son is, loves cars. He's 21, and he video races on these virtual games. And they're international, and he signed up for this game, and he kept winning. Worldwide, he was number one. So the company reaches out to him, his name's Andrew. He goes, "Andrew, you're cheating, because our computer is unbeatable. What are you doing?" He goes, "I'm not cheating." And the guy says, "You are, and I'm going to prove it. Give me a couple days to recode stuff, and then you can try again." It gets recoded. He comes back, and he beats the computer again. Over 10,000 people worldwide. Week after that, they gave him a job offer. First, riding cars, test-driving their electronic cars, and now he's their content manager. Racing video games. I mean, the craziest things. But we lose sight of that. And I don't want kids to lose sight of that. I want them to learn how to take what they love to do, and, and give it a go, whether it's a hobby, plan B, whatever it is.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. Enjoy your evening.
Thank you.
I'm going to hand it over, thank you, Mr. DiMaggio, to Allison Leonardo. She's going to quickly talk about what she's been working on with the CASH students. These are the videos that you would see. I'll let her talk about how she did it, I have zero clue. And allow her to show you one of the videos that they created, students.
I'm not as excited as Mr. DiMaggio. So our CASH kids spent the last quarter collecting, going out and collecting videos from all the classes. The teachers were really worried about it. They let them in. And then each, and it didn't matter, they went and videoed any class they could get, they could get into. And then we put it all together in a Google Drive folder, and they shared it with each other. And then they took their, whatever elective they signed up for, and they created videos using iMovie. They had to write a script. They had to, they used the course guide as the example, and they rewrote, they wrote it in their own words. And then they also had to interview either the teacher, a former, you know, student who was taking it, or has taken it. Or they could do it themselves, because some of them already took the classes they signed up for. So, Drawing and Painting is by Hannah.
Drawing and Painting explores arts. It's a class to develop skills which involves eye and hand coordination. The student will learn and apply observation skills. They will also learn and explore a wider range of drawing and painting, art elements and design. Once you've taken Studio Art, which is available for eighth to 12th graders, you can take Drawing and Painting. If you've taken the class for one whole year, then you have an opportunity to take Advanced Drawing and Painting. Tell me about Drawing and Painting.
So Drawing and Painting is the first course in a two-year sequence offered at CA. As the first course in this sequence, students will learn to examine the basic skills and techniques of drawing and painting with a variety of materials in greater depth. There will also be an emphasis on concept building and problem solving. The course includes a review of basic art theory and an introduction to basic drawing and painting techniques.
How does Studio Art prepare you for Drawing and Painting?
In Studio Art, that class is designed for students to explore art mediums, artists, and art movements, as well as make connections between art and other subject areas, as well as just build foundational skills that you'll need to directly apply to Drawing and Painting.
What grade do you have to be to take the class?
If you pass Studio Art in your eighth grade year, then you can take it in your freshman year, which is grade nine through 12. If you pass Studio Art within any of your grade levels, it would be whatever you take after that.
Okay. What topics do you cover, or units?
Drawing and Painting basically is drawing, painting, we do some printmaking, and some mixed media.
Is Drawing and Painting a full or half course?
That one is a full-year course.
Do you enjoy teaching Drawing and Painting?
Yes, I love it so much. I've currently taught it for five years now.
Awesome.
So, Hannah was the one who did that one. She recorded those videos in time lapse using the iPads, and then she took, she recorded Mrs. Ramondo and her having the interview, and took the audio and put it over the time-lapse photo, videos. And then these are attached to the course guide, the 23, 24 course guide. You'll see, you'll notice that some of them are in blue. When you click on it, that'll bring up the videos. I am currently trying to put them all on the course guide, which takes a lot longer than you would think.
Miss Leonardo doesn't like them when I walk in her room.
Ever, ever.
You can't blame her. Did Hannah do the, all of them, or just?
So, I think Kayla Ramondo.
Hannah's not here.
Okay.
She's not here. I think Kayla Ramondo was the one who was drawing.
Yes.
And then, I'm pretty sure it was. And then she recorded it using the time lapse. And then, I'm not sure who did the painting part, but she did, yep, she.
But the other, do you have other ones that she narrated, or is it?
She narrated, yeah, she narrated it.
Or is it different?
That one's just Hannah's. So like Ceramics.
Bella, did you do one of them? Which one did you do?
I did the one on the Cash Bar, the class that Miss Leonardo teaches.
Can we watch it, Bella?
Yeah.
Do we have the Cash Bar one?
I can get it.
Ceramics explores how to work with clay, and it includes drawing out ideas. This class teaches students how to utilize various construction methods and how to load and set a kiln. Any student in grades 10 through 12 can join Ceramics.
That's just a really quick one.
Yeah, so that one, she didn't get an interview, but she was able to narrate it.
And do you have the, is it CASH?
Yes, but I would have to, I can email to you.
Oh, I just wanted to.
I would have to pull it up.
And who did that?
Bella did. Can we go click on the guide?
I don't think I put Cash up, because no.
Okay.
If a kid couldn't get into, some of the courses are in the spring and not the fall. And since we did it in quarter two, we weren't able to get some of the videos. So I had the, whoever couldn't get the video, I had them do it on CASH. So I have about 15 CASH.
Ceramics.
Any questions for Miss Leonardo? Okay, next up is going to be Student Council, who's also your student liaison for this sponsor meeting. All of you, come on. Miss White, if you want to come up to, come on. No? Do I need to sit next to you guys if you present, or?
No.
Sure? Okay.
Okay, so, we are like really small this year. We didn't have a lot of kids for Student Council, but we have a lot of good ideas. In the fall, we did the pep rally, and we're planning for the spring currently.
I don't know, what else did we do in the fall?
Oh, Spirit Weeks. We did Spirit Weeks. Oh, Spirit Weeks, we did Spirit Weeks, the Homecoming. We did Neon as our theme and we did the Chili Croft to fundraise.
Slide on top of that.
Oh, yeah. So yeah, we did Homecoming Spirit Week, Homecoming Pep Rally at the Stadium Field. Socktober on Sock Donations to Rise, which is an organization for, I don't know. An organization for.
Refugees.
Refugees, yeah. But yeah, we raised a lot of socks for them. And in the winter events, we did Holiday Spirit Week, including a New Year's Eve party in the hallway with hot cocoa and celebration and party accessories for all the kids. We did annual door decorating contest. Florida Indian River Grove Food Fundraiser, which is like a little.
Kind of fireworks. Yeah, if you can celebrate them to your relatives and stuff.
Okay, yeah, so what we did recently is we went to the Capital Youth Summit and this was just talking about more of like stuff that relates to us as kids, whether it was like overdose, like drug use and stuff like that. And I felt like this was very impactful, like as kids, not to, as kids, I feel like we're always hearing the same things over and over. But this was more like interactive. They had us all like doing things, going around, talking to different organizations. That helped. So I don't know, I think that was like one of the best parts that we did so far.
Subani, I'm going to put you on the spot really quick. Did you remember last year's Student Council field trip?
I think, oh.
You didn't go to the Student Council?
No, this was my first.
I remember the speaker was.
I remember the speaker was.
Yes, who was it? Now, this is a speaker we got last year to come in and present to the whole school, including eighth grade. Do you remember what it was about?
COVID, COVID-19 disorders.
I think we, we went to that. Actually.
So this is where, at this council field trip, that's where they met, that meeting to present. So that's kind of the goal almost every single year is to meet someone. We are going to hopefully bring another person this year as well.
So yeah, we've been looking into having like a guest speaker come in during the spring. We're planning a spring spirit week currently, a school-wide assembly. And then we were going to do a senior send-off barbecue because we recently found out that they're not doing seniors on rise this year. So we're going to do like a senior send-off barbecue and then have like, hopefully planning on having a bonfire.
He was sleeping there. She's off the clock right now, so she'll see you tomorrow.
And our law school trip to the city.
Shopping in the city. I don't really know how we can interpret that, but.
No, I think we're good. Any questions?
I'm going to put you on the spot and I don't mean to. But I'm really interested in the youth summit. Is there any ideas or solutions or things that you can bring back to the kids at CA that would benefit them?
We learned a lot.
I feel like the driving while intoxicated one would be really good to bring back because it's like not as like deep as the, like one that we had last year. It's more like lighter, but still very influential to like talk to about and stuff.
Especially around prom, huh?
Yeah, around prom, it's good because like there could be driving while intoxicated. Then would you like that backseat driving while intoxicated and stuff?
We also learned a lot like nicotine and marijuana being like gateway drugs and leading into like many other health issues. And I feel like that needs to be talked about a lot, like especially with kids our age, like not even in our school, but surrounding schools. So it'd be good to bring someone in to like talk about that. And we met like with a lot of organizations who talked about like youth voices and youth power around New York State, like empowering young people to like use their voices. So hopefully like maybe encouraging more people to come to Student Council meetings and have a voice instead of like just laying back.
So how do you get on the Student Council? What's the process?
So we advertise our meetings. Ms. Weisstein sends out emails and we talk about it. Like we plan things and like then we'll say, okay, this was like, this was thrown by Student Council. So they come to our next meeting, which will be next Thursday.
Or the counselors even have like a list of like all the clubs. And they would tell you like, oh, these are the clubs and this is what it is. So like this was actually my first year of joining it because I actually had no idea what Student Council was. But like from all the advertising, I was like, okay, wait, I actually want to do something with the school instead of complaining like, oh, we don't do enough. So that's why I joined it to help with like the pep rallies. And actually I got a lot more feedback from it too.
So you can choose to join, you're not elected to join?
No, no.
So anybody can, is it high school?
Yeah, but we also have a middle school Student Council. So like seventh and eighth grade is when you can run for class, Student Council President. And then when you get into the high school, you break off into class officers and everything like that. But then there's also Student Council. That's just like the whole high school body coming together and electing officers, which is usually like a senior or junior as president. And everyone just talks about like things we want to do for the students and the community.
So how many of you are there?
Well, in the Google classroom, I think it was like 40 people signed up, but the ones that actually show up is probably like 10 to 15 that are active in it.
At the youth summit, there were seven of us, so it's kind of hard.
The youth summit was open to anybody who wanted to come, but.
Well, I'm on a very hard week too. A lot of my drama members were tied up, were tied up with drama practices. Then they had to do some hard homework. So it was an off week for us to do the field trip. But the seven that went were very, very engaged in everything, as all the students are. It's really amazing to go and see. I think this year was one of the smaller groups and there was over 400 students from area schools. And I think you guys can attest to how quiet it is during the presentations. You know, people are there because they want to make their schools better. So it's refreshing to see.
Well, we love to hear from students, right? I mean, if you think of things that we might do to help with things or if you wanted to share things with us that the students are happy about or concerned about or wish we could help with presenters or whatever that. We want, I think, you to know that you can come to a meeting anytime. And I think we'd all be glad to hear what you have to say. Because I think we were elected, so we chose to do, like you did. You chose to do something so you could help out the other kids or maybe have more activities, but also do some things about helping the community, you said? You were raising funds or was it socks? Well, that's important because one of the, I've heard that one of the biggest wish for items in homeless shelters are socks because they, you know, they run out of socks fast. So those are, that's important to find those things. So, you know, thank you for giving up your evening tonight and sharing with us.
And did we plan on going up and tutoring?
Yes, so Rise also allows for high school students to come in as reading buddies. Rise is a wonderful organization that's located right across from St. Rose. They're affiliated with the Albany School District. So students are bussed over that have a need for English as a second language classes. And while the students are getting their homework help from the staff at Rise, their parents are coming in the evenings for their citizenship classes. And dinner is served there if the family is in need of that. So they do open it up to reading buddies. So we were going to run a reading buddy shuttle, put my car up once a month on a Tuesday night, but their fault because it's popular. So we're on the waiting list. Hopefully someday.
And thank you too, Ms. Weisstein, because for doing this, the advisory piece to this. So you've done it a few years, right?
Just a couple.
Well, thank you.
Maybe 2008.
Well, that's, that's a couple.
This is a fantastic group. Subani is a senior and we're going to miss her so much for coming, you know, in senior year and looking to make a change and do what she can. And then we're kind of bookended with a bunch of seniors and then some really excitable freshmen like Bella. And Casey's been with me for two years now. So they definitely have their sights on some really exciting things.
That's great. Well, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I'm going to pass hello to Rocco, please. I'm just going to talk about technical theater and woodworking class.
Hello.
Hello.
Yeah, so I'm just going to show you the course that I'm doing now. I just started technical theater this year. I was building sets the last year, a little bit the third year before that. And then I reached out to, there's a guy at Quest Art, connected with professionals. So he looked up to the guy that works for Brockers. And I spent some of working with anyone on the Brockers sets. And I worked a bunch there. So then I used that information basically to build this course and teach it this year. And still working for Barmus, we're still developing everything, but so far it's still good. So these are basic photos of the kids in the class, what they're doing, what's at home. Guys saw the play, they made very much everything. I designed a lot of it and then they would build it and then paint it.
That's, that looks great.
Yeah, it's really rewarding. So this is, they built this last year, actually in the woods, but it's a block, you know, just scrap wood we used. That was last year too, the tower. And a lot of this is all salvage stuff. So there's, I don't know if you guys know Armin, but he was one of my best students this year. He's in eighth grade. So here I'm showing him how to use the router, you know, proper safety equipment and everything, you know? If you see that, okay. These guys built that bed with me. It was all Morrison tin and it comes apart, so you can use that. It folds up nice and flat. That's Shelby. Shelby really wanted to learn how to do this stuff. She's more of an artist type person, but she wanted to learn how to build things. So I had her doing that too. And you can see we do like a different kind of construction in technical theater. It's not like building houses. Everything has to be very light and very strong. So it's a lot of thin plywood and we use a lot of like select lumber, not like two by fours. It needs to be straight and plumb. And then you just use staples and glue. It's like, it's very strong, but like super light. So here, these guys are making rectangles and I'm showing them how to like paint. Put like three D shadows into it so it's more three-dimensional. So we go with painting and stage dressing and everything. And then everybody, all hands on deck, painting the backdrops for the last couple of weeks. That was the boat. That's, it comes apart in three sections. You have to build everything so you can actually bring it through the doors and then put it together and then take it out. So all that's part of the class and learning how to plan ahead for those types of things. The long and bigger thing, that's like a three-part building that comes together with bolts. That was a fun one. There's a kid underneath here or whoever that moves it. I don't know if you saw that.
Yeah.
That was fun. Yeah, she would fall back because she's pregnant.
Oh, yeah.
So that was technical theater and woodworking I started doing last year. I used to do it a lot, it's a hobby. And then I decided to start teaching again last year. So these guys are building furniture currently. They're building nightstands out of solid maple. And it's all like traditional joinery, Morrison tin, but not by hand. They're using the machines, they're using Deo stacks and mortars. So machinery, but they're doing, you know, manufacturing techniques. This is kind of where, they have picture frames for this one. They really enjoyed that project, that was cool. There's Tommy using the mortar. That's I think the leg for his nightstand right there. Ronan using the Deo stack, so he's cutting the mortars or the tin on. Rainirwe, that was a huge hit. Everybody loves doing that. That's just with a bandsaw, really easy. So we do that, it's like an introductory project. I think this Ronan put together his side so you can see these are all kind of like mission style, you know, like with the armor joinery. So that's kind of what we're focusing on right now. So then there's Jason, I'm building those. But anyway, that's kind of what we're doing now in woodworking. All hard was whenever possible, that's a little bench. That's going to be like the first project to do in the beginning of the year, it's a little bench. But anyway, if that's what they look like now, we're going to do the drawers next. Those are going to be duff tail drawers. We're going to use a ten to lift, so it's not like by hand or anything. That's basically it.
So do you sell these?
The problem is, they're not great, but they look nice. But if you actually add in your house, it's a little, you know, out of parallel.
Doesn't quite fit in the corner.
Yeah, so we're going to try and refine it over time and then figure out better ways of assembly so it's consistent over time.
Well, they look very nice.
At least we got that down and we might do something like that.
Now, how many kids participate in these classes currently?
It varies. Last year I had almost 20 in woodshop, but it just wasn't manageable. So sweet spots around 10. This year I have about five and it's great because we can just kind of do whatever. I have about five in the theater production, but again, a lot of it has to do with scheduling. They only have so many slots in their schedule, especially if they're like kids in an advanced track. Like they may have like three slots for like their entire high school year. And if it doesn't line up with the period they have off, they just can't take it. So it's just kind of unfortunate. A lot of kids would like to take certain classes, but it's just not as good. And it's probably been working on my entire career. It's just, I don't know if it's a good solution.
Is it possible to form like some, like a woodworking club or?
Um, yeah, it could be. I don't know. The problem is I wear a lot of hats already. I'm pretty, I'm like, I'm like overwhelmed. I'm wearing all the CNC right now, which is fine. I enjoy it and I'm actually pretty happy about it. I feel really good about where we're headed. But, you know, I'm doing that full speed. Drama Club just ended and I'm still cleaning up the woodshop and metal shop and the CNC shop. I might just like, just like so much going on. So it was like everything a little more dialed in maybe, but currently it's pretty tough.
Do great work.
Thank you, appreciate it.
We appreciate all that you're doing. Not that you're overwhelmed, but sorry. I appreciate it, we appreciate it. Thank you.
So next is going to be Katie Marr. She is our upper level Spanish teacher, but also has taken on our peer mentoring seminar this year. I will talk very briefly about, it was, you can stand there. It was, and I don't know if she's going to touch mine or sit down, but it was only supposed to be a semester long course. That's just how we planned it. It was going to be just in the fall. It turns out the students and mentees, mentors, mentees, really, really, really enjoyed it and wanted to continue it. So we are now continuing it in the springtime with the students. Were you going to talk about that?
Yeah. Hi, again, I'm Katie Marr. I'm a Spanish teacher at high school. I am incredibly nervous right now. And this year I have the privilege, I got the privilege of teaching the peer mentoring seminar at the high school. So in this photo, you can see we have three pairs. Kirsten's on the left, the left over there. She's a junior, she got matched up with a seventh grader. Riley's in the middle, she's a sophomore. And Matt is also a sophomore and they were both paired up with sixth graders. So the goals for our program were to create and build some positive peer role models here in the secondary building. Also to be responsive to the community setting. And we all know in this post-pandemic world how important human connection is. And just generally guide social and emotional development for our adolescents here at CA. So semester one, we started with a flex block, which was 40 minutes every other day. It was a pass fail course, so there were no homework obligations outside of our class meeting time. But from the get-go, I told the students to be ready for group discussions, collaborative projects and collaborative activities so that we can create resources. And here you can see some of the kids giving a presentation to Mrs. Fields' seventh grade health class on stress management. So that was one of our final cumulative projects for Stress Management Unit. Okay, I got to do this and then I got to do this. All right, so here are your units of study. We have self and relationship management, stress management, decision-making, planning and goal-setting and communication. These are borrowed from the New York State Health Education Curriculum where we learn about skills and implement functional knowledge. I think these are the soft skills that you were kind of talking about earlier. And so my main goal with these units was for the students to then create resources at the end of each unit that they could pull from and utilize when working with their mentee or just kind of have it, you know, in their pocket for just general life skills. So the semester one, Introduction Day was January 5th. So the semester one, introduction day was January 5th. So they, I have to give a lot of credit to the middle school counselors, Dawn and Sharon. They did a lot of liaising with the teachers and the team recommendations, who would most benefit from being a mentee in the middle school. And then they also reached out to the families and got parental support, and that was great. So the introduction day approached, January 5th, and the mentors, the high school kids, were very nervous, in a good way, nervous.
You were nervous though.
I was very nervous. They created icebreaker activities and questions. They basically planned that 40 minutes on their own, you know, they researched, they created a slideshow and everything. And, and it was great, so the nine of us kind of participated together for this block. And so it's Dawn, Sharon, and I, and then the six students. And then at the end, I just had the mentees, I had the middle school kids fill out this short little rule of form, like, how are you feeling about being a mentee? Awesome or the absolute worst, you know? How do you feel about having an older high school student as a mentor? Awesome, absolute worst? And just like any activities that they wanted to do with their mentor, whether it's puzzles, or coloring, or playing Uno, or going to the weight room, just kind of to get an idea bank going for use. And then we were able to do three meetups in January, scheduled meetups. And so the semester two, the idea was for it to kind of finish in semester one, and then the mentor pairs would meet during 10th period. And that wasn't really working, so we had to reevaluate and kind of re-schedule some things. But we are able to meet every four days during Block 4A, and the high school students can fill out the Passport for Good, which are community service volunteer hours. And I have them kind of as a continuation of the class, fill out some reflection questions, same reflection questions every meetup, to just like on a live Google Doc, so that they have, I can kind of gauge where they're at with the relationship. Okay, so there are benefits for both the mentor and the mentee. Ownership and accountability was visible to me right away with the high school students. And, I'm not sure.
Go back one, there you go.
There we go, okay, so the, the benefits for both, both mentor and mentee and the pair, you know, the high school students kind of really jumped right into the icebreaker activity, I could see that they were eager to do it. And then the relationship building, the mutual trust, that sense of belonging, that takes a bit longer to build and grow, and it's much harder to measure. So, you know, from the communication unit, I talked, I spoke with the high schoolers, you know, like, this is a two-way street, you being a mentor, working with the younger student, this is a two-way street. This is not you as an older, wiser high school student imparting all of your nuggets of wisdom to the middle schoolers. This is an opportunity for you to learn about yourself and learn about your mentee at the same time. So it's been really great, I feel really privileged to be able to kind of spearhead this, and I really hope to continue next year.
Thank you.
Questions?
How many kids are involved now?
There are six total, so three high schoolers matched up with three middle schoolers, and I had, you know, male, male, female, female, right, so.
And moving forward, the process to expand this opportunity?
Yes.
What has been discussed for that?
At this point, we have a lot of the counselors meeting with 10th graders at the moment. I've reached out to both the ninth grade and 10th grade teams to get names of, from the team of teachers, you know, who would they recommend would most benefit? Because it doesn't have to be, you know, for the mentors, I mean, for the high school students. And so I've gotten kind of a pool of names, I'm trying to reach out to the students, I don't teach all of the students, so, you know, for high schoolers, for some random lady to walk up, hey, do you want to be a mentor? You know, it's like, I have to go about it in a different way, but yes, I would like to have more than three students in the class next year, so.
Have you seen a growth in the mentors, and have you seen an improvement in self-confidence with the mentees?
I think the correct answer is yes, but to be very candid with you, they haven't met enough.
Okay.
To be able to really answer that in a thorough manner. They met four times, including introduction day in January, and there was like some hiccups during the month of February, and so now this past week is where we're starting.
Oh, okay, yes, and now, yeah.
So maybe I can go back at the end of the year and answer that.
Yeah.
Well, I will say that you're fulfilling an area that the board, coached by Mr. Wallace, has talked about for about 15 years, is just mentoring and different ways to set it up. And we've been, you know, we've been very interested in different models and how they might take root, so we're, we're cheering for you, even though you're, you may not hear us. We are cheering for you, because this, this, this is really important work.
Thank you, thank you so much.
And we appreciate you doing it, so thank you.
I want to say, I think you're the right person for this.
All right, all right, thank you very much, sir, yes.
You didn't give any background about yourself.
No.
So the reason she really loves doing this is she taught in Japan for, where did I, where did I, where did I myself?
In Asia, in Hong Kong.
Hong Kong, sorry.
Yes.
And that's where like this all really stemmed from, because they do it, you can talk briefly about what.
So in that international school in Hong Kong, I was a Spanish teacher. And the, there was a well-being curriculum built in to each grade level. So as an advisor, I started with the sixth grade homeroom, basically. And every week we had a block schedule where we would teach well-being. Whether that for sixth graders was, you know, organization, all the way up to 10th and 11th graders, and kind of doing volunteer community projects, so. That's where I kind of saw how beneficial it was for the student body, for student, student connection, teacher-student connection, just to kind of create a safe place and kind of learn and grow together, so, yeah.
Well, that's really valuable, because for us to get that from you, the international experience even, and that it works all around the world, which we can assume, but you can attest to it, so thank you for that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Nice job. Don't be nervous.
Last but not least is Mr. Guile, his student in robotics. You guys only have one slide to prepare.
Uh, two slides. Just put videos on the second one.
Okay.
So I figured we could pass this around, if you could all look at it, that's Jacob's current robot. And so in this robotics course, we've got these devices down here, this is called an Arduino. It's technically a microcontroller, see later. Which is basically just like a small computer that you can upload code to. And so then this Arduino connects to the bottom of this thing right here, which is called prototyping board, so you're able to do electric circuits and stuff like that. And so Jacob and I have been working on this robot for about the whole year, doing just a bunch of different projects. I figured I'd let Jacob take over from here and tell you what he's been working on.
Hi. So for the first portion of the course, I learned what C++ programming with the Arduino was. It's, so common coding at our school is Python, whereas with the board, it needs C++, so it's like a different language. So it took me a little bit to get used to that. And then once I got used to that, I messed around with Wired and programming speakers to play songs, which on the next slide, there's a video of actually playing the song, I think I did Wheels on the Bus Go Round and Round. So I had written all this code, pulled it the different tones and notes to make it, and then pulled up the frequency to send to the speaker to make the sound for the note. And then the following assignment was wired and programmed servos to navigation. So on the bottom of the robot, there's two servos, each servo is like an engine. So I had to tell the robot, I think the first thing I did was I zeroed the servos, so if, when you have power going to the servos, one may spin and the other one may not. So I had to tell it to send the same frequency to the servos, and then I had to zero them, so neither of them would spin when this frequency was set to them. And then my next assignment was I had several objects drawn out on a table with chalk, and I programmed the robot to follow the line on the table, like I did a circle, square, octagon, all sorts of different shapes. And then after that assignment, I tried to program the robot to follow this maze on the floor of the classroom. I think on the following slide, there's also a video of that. And then after I did that one, I programmed the robot to follow light, yeah, light-based navigation. So we took the maze and we built like walls on the side of all of the maze. So the idea was we put the robot at the start, and the robot would follow the light. So if it got close to the wall, the shadow would go onto the light, so it would turn back on into the light, and it'd follow its way around it. Of course, that took a little bit of, like, trying to figure out how it all worked. Then the second one, or for that unit, the second one was remote control navigation, where I had to read code, rewired the breadboard, and I had this little sensor on the top of the breadboard, and I had a TV remote. I would write this code to read what the sensor was sensing. So I'd take the TV remote, I'd click a button, like for example, the power button. My code was written, so it'd give me back a number that the TV remote sent to the sensor, so I would think, the power button was one, and then I had the four arrows and the OK button. That was my main, six buttons I used to drive the Arduino. Then once I had all those numbers, I went back into the code and I rewrote the code. So when the robot sensed, oh, when the robot sensors sensed, like say, number nine, which was forward, it would drive forwards until it stopped reading that sensor. And then each button had its own sensor, so as I hit each other button, the robot would do different things. With that, I was able to navigate the whole maze, and then I also drove it down the hallway, and it made 130 feet, I believe, before it was out of range of the sensor, which was pretty impressive, because it was just a normal TV remote.
And I don't want Jacob to undersell what he's doing here, so like, for example, with the speaker project, which he kind of glossed over, it may sound simple to just program Wheels on the Bus Go Round and Round, but he started with sheet music, and first had to figure out what all the individual notes are from the sheet music, then relate those to a frequency, so that the speaker could actually play those frequencies, and then he had to put it into an array, so they would play everything at the right time. So it's not just some program where it says, tell the robot to play C4 or something like that. He had to actually go step by step and build it from the ground up. And that wasn't just the speaker project, that's all of them. So the remote control one, it's a universal remote that I got on Amazon for five bucks. We had to figure out how to get that thing to work. It's not the dedicated remote control that goes with this product, it's something that we had to figure out on our own. So I just want to put that out there, don't let Jacob trick you, he put a lot of effort into all of those projects.
Yeah, there's, there's no way we think otherwise.
So for example, on the right-hand side there, that's like one bit of code that we were using for one of these. So we had one project where we had whisker switches out front, they're basically like straightened out paper clips. And so if the robot bumped into something, the paper clip would hit into our electric circuit, and it would know that it bumped into something. And so this code here is just to test if one of those bump switches got hit or not. And so we had the bump switches, two LEDs, the right one gets hit, this one lights up, the other one gets hit, that one lights up. And all that code is just to do that part. And I didn't give you access to the two videos, so we will be watching this. Unless it gets sent to my phone real quick.
So what year are you in, Jacob?
I'm a senior.
You're a senior.
Yeah.
So where do you think you're gonna be going next year?
Not really sure, I'm in between RPI and WPI. My point is to major mechanical engineering and minor aerospace engineering, and then pursue the aerospace engineering, and maybe someday build a plane.
Well, I think we're very impressed. It's, it's funny, I think, what is it, March, I mean, I hope we can learn, like, Mr. Squire sends to us after graduation where everybody went, and it's just really encouraging to see you, you know, you and what you've done and your plans, there's no way I could, this is not anything I could ever dream of doing. So you got a bright future, I had it really.
I know, he's so nudge-a-lotly telling us, like, yeah.
I'll go to RPI.
Do you know how many hours? That's way longer than what he's trying to tell us.
How many hours to do that?
That you put into this, or should I say days, because it had to be?
Uh, I have class every other day for an hour and a half, so. Since the beginning of the school year, I've been doing it every other day for an hour and a half.
And you don't do it outside of class?
No.
You brought it home one time.
Yeah.
Show your folks.
Yeah, I brought it home. To show my parents, and then when I was walking around the school, and the next day, everyone was kind of blown away, and a lot of people were asking me questions about the course and what it entailed.
So did you sell it well for Mr. Guile?
I think so. I send it to picture, I send pictures of it to people all the time, like people who don't go to this school, and they're all very jealous. Same with the whole tech department. I don't know, I always thought other schools had stuff like this, and then come to find out, no schools have anything comparable to this.
Did you apply to the schools yet?
Yeah, I've already received my acceptance letters, so now I just got to check.
You received your?
Acceptance letters.
Say that loud. That's terrific. Well, thank you, Mr. Guile.
I think I got one.
You got one?
I think it's the second one that showed up on my phone at least. So this is the maze that Jacob was talking about, so the green lines on the ground are just tape marks. And this was when he hardcoded the robot to travel through the maze, if it ever loads.
While we're waiting, doesn't WPI have a good like robotics program out there for, what's that show called that they?
BattleBots?
BattleBots, thank you.
Yeah, when I toured there, they, they put a lot of emphasis into their program. I think they're ranked number one in the nation for robotics, I'm not positive though. But when I first visited, that's kind of what brought my idea to robotics, and then I found out, because last year they didn't really advertise, they didn't advertise this class at all. So I didn't know it existed until the beginning of this year. So I joined in, I was able to join the class after two weeks into the school year. And going to WPI, I learned a lot about robots, and then I also learned all about their other programs. But coming back here, finding out we had a robotic program, I really wanted to try it, just to see what it was like. And also, I thought it would be a good idea to have that on my transcript, trying to apply to a robotic school. One last thing we didn't, I didn't get to talk about was with the robot that we have in front of you there. Right now, we have it wired for infrared, so there's two lights that shoot off the front, and then there's two sensors. The lights come off, it shoots light, beams at like 700 miles.
Yeah, it's beautiful, it's 30, 30 million meters per second.
Something crazy. But anyways, the light will bounce off the wall and come back. We're currently working on it, so it's not functional. But the idea is it will be able to tell you the distance of the wall in front of you, it can keep, it can drive with keeping the wall at like five inches. So you set it to five inches, you put it in this maze with the walls, and it will go around the whole maze, keeping the wall within five inches of it. And if you don't have it set to the five inch thing, you can put it in the maze, and it can navigate the maze without hitting a wall, because it can tell where the walls are, and it like maps out the whole maze.
So the ultimate goal is the final project for this is to have the robot fully autonomously travel through the maze that we set up in this classroom. So you just upload the code once, send it, and let it do its thing.
So this is like Tesla adventure?
Yeah. Self-driving cars. So I don't think the videos are gonna work, but I can, I can show them.
That'd be great, send them to us, yeah, that'd be great.
I was more nervous about doing this than taking one of your tests.
Sorry. Maybe because you were in the crowd.
He is very imposing to us. Well, you did a great job.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Thank you.
So that is just a glimpse of what's going on within the high school and what's, you know, working on. But next year, like I said, I will be able to set up a tour, so, you know, it won't be an hour and 10 minutes, but, you know, we can have each department kind of talk about some lectures that they're doing and what they're covering, and I can bring you to those places. So you could see Rocco's woodshop, you could see his robotics physics lab. So you could see Rocco's woodshop, you could see his robotics physics lab that he works at and, and they can give a quick demonstration. So that's kind of the plan for, for next year with the showcase.
Do we have four presentation meetings? Do we have four like presentation meetings throughout the year? Throughout like the year? That we could do one, like each building gets one?
Yeah, that's what we're gonna think do next year.
So you have time to plan and? Like, no, I'm saying like have a like a, cause I know you didn't, you just talked to us about it not that long ago.
Right.
So, but that would be really cool.
One of the things that got me is he just said on his way out, but he didn't even know about the class. And that's something we talked about a while ago and now seeing, you know, the cash kids making videos about the electives, having a more interactive like, that's, it's all wonderful stuff and it's.
And getting the word out to parents, having parents involved in helping their kids pick these classes.
Well, one of the things we, we wanna do, to piggyback on McColl and then Bart, we talked about this too, is like use these videos as, as marketing. You know, and then like, then, you know, for a better way to say it, maybe one a week, you know, we put out, we put out some art on Facebook. We, we push them out to parents, because they don't, why would they know, you know?
Right, but even having the opportunity to like talk with your, going with your kid and talking about your options. Because I know that it was, I mean, just in personal experience, it's helpful with Morgan, you know, like trying to decide for her what would be her best course. Like she didn't take trig and chemistry, she took a bunch of art classes and it did her well, because she, you know. So, but it's awesome that these kids are doing these things, it really is.
Makes you wanna come back to high school.
I know, really.
I had someone from Columbia Green, actually, he's one of the directors over there. They're doing one of their, they got, we got chosen for one of their accreditation site visits, which is next week, next Monday. And so they came in first to talk to me and really see the space and I brought him back into our dream app. And Casey, I actually know personally, goes, I wish I had this in high school. And I was like, yeah, this is, this is kind of where we're going. Like he walked by, saw the seahorses and we walked into Latin Marie Biology room and they're just like.
I was just saying, I haven't seen the seahorses yet.
Well, they haven't had the reveal yet, but they won't let us do the reveal yet, the teachers, so we're waiting, we're waiting. Like they're a semi-reveal.
Well, the cafe gave a big sum of money too, so like, that's where I'm like, things like that.
One didn't make it.
It happened. It's a life lesson in itself.
There was two females and one male in the tank and one female was very dominant and.
It was a better species.
Men need to learn.
So the one female actually broke the other female's jaw.
Oh, gosh.
And so they had to have a ceremonial burial. Because it wouldn't, he couldn't eat, the other one couldn't eat. Yes, it was in the toilet.
Come on, right, that's what I'm saying, except for the.
So there are two in there, there are other living things in the tanks, but they're, the other one is like, you know, hesitant to eat right now. So they've been working on a lot, I mean, I, I was in here yesterday and I was, you know, heading out to leave and Lily Glass, the Marie Biology teacher, was in her room, like almost hand feeding one of the seahorses. Just to get them to eat, so we're getting there, they're trying to figure it all out.
So it's just trying to acclimate to the conditions, cause it's not used to.
She knows she owns that other one.
The reason, again, I'm not the expert on this, but from what I understand, the reason it's taken, they, it takes them probably three months to get the water right. pH level, everything else. And then they bring in, they brought in a rock that had something in it.
Live rock.
Yeah, it was like a live rock to make sure that survived for like a month. And then they introduce something else into the tank.
It takes forever.
It, it does, it really has taken forever. And that, that's why like they're so confused of why the seahorses are struggling, because they've done all the water research, all of, you know, all the research that they need to do and they're, they're like, they've come to narrow down like two reasons why. So, but they'll get there.
Was that yours? Is that it?
That's it, I'm done.
Well, I, I will say though. Yeah, I know.
I think I called Kirk Junior.
What I will say.
You gotta be a little nicer.
It's not because he's balding.
But what I will say though is that to you, to your credit, to, to come and present different people to us. And you say you're not an expert, but that's the, that's your job is to not be the expert, but to nurture and, and help grow the people that you supervise, so that they feel that they can do things and have the, their own autonomy to be able to do all the things that we saw tonight and the freedom to do that. So you're, you're doing a heck of a job at that, so I appreciate that. I, and I wanted to say that because just the, the breadth of things that we saw tonight is terrific.
I think ultimately, if you get people to do what they want to do.
Exactly.
It's amazing the work that they can put out and our kitchen benefit.
And one of the notes that I had from all this was just the passion of the staff was incredible. And then to see that transferred to this, to the kids.
Yep.
So credit to you and, and your staff in doing that, it's amazing.
I don't wanna rush my third grader, but the things that she's gonna get to experience that I didn't get to experience here, she's, it's gonna, it's gonna blow her away, she's gonna have so many opportunities that, you know, are just starting to be created that by the time she's up there, who knows what could be.
And I think the goal ultimately in, in working with, you know, Friday in the middle school is to start to bleed those things down into the middle school. Because they actually do have more freedom to learn these different things. You know, these different courses in sixth, seventh, eighth grade, whereas we, we do have regions to worry about. But we also wanna be able to, you know, afford all the students these opportunities as well. So I think there is that opportunity to, to bring it down into the middle school. I, I know, I'm talking with tech, just, you know, the, the two teachers we have now, you know, they, once we get to third and they, they want to get all together and talk about tech seven through twelve and how it looks. And so that, that's just kind of where we're.
And also Melissa, this far as.
Yes.
Bridging to the new mentor.
Do seventh and eighth graders not have tech?
They do.
Okay, I was like, I know, back in the day I had it.
They do, they do, but it's, it's now.
It was cool.
They're, they're, yes, yep. It's just affording them more opportunities through tech.
And I think it's great, because we've always talked about as a board, like really giving kids the opportunity to find where they fit and what they're good at and just having the wide array of opportunities can help them to find those things, instead of feeling like they have to go to a four-year college to find, and that's where they'll find it. They should.
It's pricey to find it.
It is, it is. And then switch after you've already, yeah, so if they can really find, I think that'll be great.
Small school with big opportunities.
Yeah, yeah.
Small school, the mentoring piece, you know, and the ally, you know, that, the opportunities as well.
I mean, the biggest struggle ultimately is scheduling.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because it, it just, you have to have those, those regular core classes. And it, it's tough, but I sit there, I mean, I give credit to my counselors as well for hand scheduling a lot of students so that they can get the most things that they request.
Do you think going away from the blocks next year is opening up more opportunities and schedules?
I wanna think so. If you ask some of my counselors, they don't think so, cause they look at it as eight periods is eight periods. Cause if you look at blocks, it's four blocks over, it's eight periods over two days. Um, I think it will, we'll be able to maneuver a little bit differently in our, our structure of our schedule. So I, I think it will help, especially with like band and chorus who you didn't get season, they've been working really hard on that play and everything. But, you know, they want that time to be able to meet together, you know, every other day or whatever it turns out to be. Right now, with the block, it's, it's very difficult to do. So I, I think it will ultimately, but you know, it's, it's still hard. I welcome any teacher at any time to come help schedule one.
Well, thank you, sir. This, Mr. Ryan Palmer.
All right. I'm gonna give you a very brief budget update, but not too brief. Uh, thank you, everybody, for coming. So just wanna give you all a budget update, uh, we've got some firm numbers from the state, a better idea of where we stand with our revenues, our expenditures. There is still a gap between that very end. Uh, we did meet this past Tuesday, um, with the finance committee to talk about and kind of give this in, in depth. Um, so there is that. Um, really all I wanna do is go through three things today. What is our timeline look like from now through budget adoption on your end? Revenue discussion, expenditure discussion as well. So this is my proposed timeline to all of you. Um, so to start off, obviously, we met the other day as a finance committee, we're meeting here today. I'm hoping to bring back a balanced budget to the finance committee by the twenty-eighth. And then from there, we have a presentation meeting on April the sixth. Uh, I would ask and, um, you know, if the finance committee is ready to do so, to recommend to the board that we go ahead and adopt the budget. Uh, the reason that I am proposing this timeline is currently, we have our next board meeting after the sixth is on April the twentieth. Uh, but the board event has to adopt the budget by the eighteenth. Um, I think it's very doable, we have a tiny gap compared to last year. Um, and so with that, I, I wanted to try to fast track that, just to fit into the timeline of board meetings. So revenues, where are we at? Um, four categories that we're gonna look at really quickly here for revenues are our fund balance, our state aid, our other revenue and our tax cap levy. Uh, I'll get into each of these in depth as we go further, but just on a, on a brief note of what they are. Appropriate fund balance is money that we are essentially pulling out of our unappropriated fund balance and saying, we would like to use this uh towards next year's budget to help offset that levy. Um, so that our revenues can more meet our expenditures. State aid comes in many forms, we'll go over each of those individually next. Um, other revenues, we'll talk about as well. And then the tax cap levy, which is the burning question, what are my taxes going to be next year? Um, is, is also a factor of our revenues. So um summed up together, it's all right there, okay? Just comparing budget to budget, uh, we are looking at an increase of two point nine percent in appropriate fund balance. Um, the reason and if, actually, I think all of you were here last year, except for maybe Shelley. Uh, last year, when I had talked to you guys, we were going for appropriate fund balance, we were going from, uh, I think it was one point eight five million, if my memory serves, down to one seven two five, cause that was where we wanted to sit as a district. So then the question is, well, why are we going up another fifty? So currently standing, we have capital projects that haven't been finished. We're all looking, we're all looking outside right now, but Lloyd's being one of them, right? Supply chain issues. Because that's not done yet, we can't submit final cost reports. If we can't submit final cost reports, we can't start getting aid on that. Doesn't mean we lose out on the aid, it just gets deferred until the next year. Uh, my proposal is to account for that now, so that seamlessly next year, it will just come back to us in the form of aid instead of appropriate fund balance. So it's a number that I'm gonna jack up by fifty thousand dollars this year. Um, and then it'll come back to us in the form of aid next year. You won't even see the difference, notice the difference really. Total state aid, again, we're seeing an increase there. Revenues, why are we losing five point two six percent? Because we are seeing a difference in our pilot payments. Uh, we had Northeast Wood Traders went off the pilot and Ferguson had a significant reduction in assessment, which is why their pilot payment was reduced. Um, the question was brought up the other night, what about Save-A-Lot, they're leaving the area, how does that affects us? How does that affect us? We're off the pilot with them anyway, so they're paying us based on their assessment until they sell the building. Um, so like I told you before, I just wanted to break down what is state aid? Uh, so the, you know, foundation aid is the, the one everybody's really looking at or where we at with our funding and everything else. We're seeing a five point oh six percent increase in that. Other big uh aid increases we're seeing is special education access costs. That's just based on the number of kids that we're sending out to private public placements and what kind of aid we're getting back for them. Uh, BOSI's aid is, and I'm sorry, BOSI's and building aid are also two significant increases for us. Um, but just to talk about these three down here, the computer software, computer hardware and library materials, those are decreasing because they are enrollment based numbers, okay? As enrollment continues to decline, we will only see those continue to decline. Other revenues, not a lot here has changed, other than the pilot payments that I already talked about. Uh, we do anticipate tuition interest that comes, these are just your, uh, again, your other related revenues coming in that we don't really have a control over, these are all just pure uh projections based on what the trends have been over, over the past few years. The only one that we really have a hard schedule to is the pilot payments. And it's already discussed why we're losing money in that. Uh, we are anticipating probably two years from now, increased pilot payments with all the solar companies coming in. Uh, we've already talked about the appropriate fund balance, that was the final category, so I just wanted to make sure we covered that. And pie charts, okay? Pie charts look identical from year to year, because it really hasn't had a lot of change from year to year as far as, um, as far as what part of the money is coming from, all right? Our tax levy continues to be the majority of our, of our revenue. Not really gonna change anytime soon, I don't see, I don't see that happening. State aid is the second largest piece. Okay, there's a ten year review for you. Um, again, I'm not gonna break it down too, too much here, other than just looking at the tax levy piece over here. Um, our tax cap calculation, I'll get into just more of the formalities, I'm telling you that I submitted it later. Our tax cap calculation this year came in at three point oh two percent. Last year is at four point two one percent. The question had been asked previously, um, is there, is there the option of going out with a zero percent or a, a significantly less or lower uh tax cap levy amount, or I'm sorry, tax levy amount? Um, I strongly advise against that. Um, I use Rensselaer as kind of my example or reason why. Uh, two thousand fifteen, the superintendent was on their way out and they wanted, you know, it becomes a she, right, Randy?
Yes.
Yeah, she wanted to do right by the taxpayers and give them a zero percent tax levy increase. They've had double-digit tax levy increases since, uh, as, up as high as I think it was nineteen point six percent uh that they had to go up to a budget vote with. Um, and this year, they're low and they're at six point, I think it's eight percent. Right, so it's a, uh, I don't wanna do that, because we will have to make up the ground. And anytime you leave money on the table, it affects next year's calculation. So last year, we had a four point two one percent cap. We went out with a two nine two, we left some money on the table. That's why we're seeing our, our uh levy cap amount go from four two one down to three oh two, with other factors involved as well. So, um, I'm sorry. So there's just a bar graph showing our budget is the blue, tax levy is the black, state aid is the, um, is the gray. And then to put a line to it, a trend line, we're looking at that right there. Okay, any questions on revenues before I move into the spending side?
So, I don't know if this is on spending. So last year, we did the two point nine two, so this year, we're trying to go up a little over three percent?
That's the cap.
Okay, so that's the cap, so we're trying to stay below.
Uh, my suggestion is going to be stay between that two nine and three oh two range. I wouldn't go below two nine, just because we'd be leaving quite a bit on the table. And we'd have to make up for that and possibly not be able to make up for that, which typically comes into evil times that nobody wants to talk about.
Okay, so I'm gonna assume that your committee is looking at ways we can cut monies. I'm just worried that with the new assessments, three percent will get voted down.
Yep, I'll get, I'll get to the assessments as, as well in a little bit.
Okay.
Um, they're not, it's not really part of my budget presentation piece of it, but I could talk to the assessments separately as well.
Ryan, you know, how do you, when you do your budget, how do you look into your crystal ball and, and consider inflation, inflation continuing to rise? Uh, do you, do you, how do you?
As far as like the figures that I presented you with?
When you develop a budget, I mean, how do you?
So when I, to, to generate the revenue side of things, I look at the executive, the governor's executive budget proposal, right? And I think probably a month's time, probably less, we'll have the legislative budget, which are more of our hard numbers. Um, so the revenue right now, these are best guesses based on the governor's budget proposal. Typically, they're not far off, usually the governor's budget's a little bit lower than the legislative budget, but not by much. And then between that and our, we have weekly business official meetings, uh, stadium planning of the Quest Star will give us kind of more firm and updated. Stadium planning of the Quest Star will give us kind of more firm and updated numbers, so to speak. And then as we get those, I'll factor those into my calculations and everything else. On the expenditure side, it's factoring in, you know, the big five, which I'll get to at the very end here. Your special education costs, your transportation costs, your salary costs, so on and so forth. Those are, those are really the meat and potatoes of your budget. And those are, meaning with, this is casual, figuring out, okay, how many kids do we plan on sending to this school, to that school, everything else? And a lot of those schools, I will say, we don't even, they don't give us contract numbers yet. We have to make best guesses. So if we look around and say average increases, we're looking between 2.5% to 3%. I'll probably budget between 3% and 3.5% just to make sure we can pay the bill when the bill shows up. And then transportation is all contract-based. You guys know, you approve the contracts. And so those, again, we will get the contract figures from RFPs, from bids, so on and so forth. So it's, it's taking everything from every cabinet in my office and Mary Ann's office and sometimes going to Randy or going to Katie and asking her and just picking all those pieces and just systematically plugging them into the system. So that can kind of give me a bottom dollar and then allow me to group it and say, we're spending X amount of dollars on special ed and X amount of dollars on transportation.
It gets really tricky because I remember with the 853 schools and budgeting the states, that's the rates. And sometimes they wouldn't tell us what the rates were for a year or two later.
We just got a bill for the '22 summer.
Yeah.
From Center for Perspective Services. Because in the contract, they say, use last year's rates, but we'll bill you later. Based on the state rate when it comes out.
Yep.
And here we are, six months after the fact, getting a bill because we owe an extra X amount of dollars.
Right.
Because that's, that's just how their, their business works.
Yeah.
Very common.
Yeah.
Like, one, one school had sent us the contract and there was no dollar amount in it.
Still ahead.
Just, yeah.
I'm like, does this mean it's free?
No.
Sure, that's not the case, but. Any other questions before I get into the spending side? So you saw this last year in the budget presentation. I put it in there because I posted this up on our website, just want folks to understand how I see things. So Bart, you had asked a question just a couple of seconds ago, how do you know what we're spending on what? Right, so if I were looking at, say, special education, I know that special education is going to come out of 2250 for the functions. It's just that it's a way to associate a number with a department, or in that case, a bigger department. Adjustments, new positions, significant changes to the budget in this section here. We have talked to you guys already about the district-wide clerical position that we are looking to add. We have already talked to you guys about the two teaching aid, or I'm sorry, teaching assistance in the special education department that have been requested. These have both been factored into the number that is going to be presented to you guys at the very end here. Notable budgets, budget adjustments. These are things that have found their way into the budget since last year's budget was approved. So last year's budget was approved in May. We elected to go with Green County Sheriff as our SRO. Thank you, Bart. And we, we elected to do that last summer, so obviously it wasn't, it wasn't in the '22, '23 budget. But it is something that obviously I do want to account for in the '23, '24 budget. We are anticipating an increased budget line for our student management system as we move away from e-school. And another thing that we had talked about with you guys, I think, is in the midsummer, if my memory serves, is program assistance for athletic department. And that is also factored into this budget. So where are we staying currently, right? So where are we staying currently? We're looking at a budget of $36,016,519, okay? That is not going to be our final budget number. That is over where we can be. It's over where we want to be, that's totally fine. It's over by about $117,000, I think, is our gap right now. All things considered, this timed last year, our gap was 1.2 million. So I got to breathe a little bit more this year, it's great. Right, and so here's just, again, our expenditures broken down the same way I went and break down the revenues earlier. All right, salaries, fringes, debt, BOC's, transportation, and other making our difference.
I already did this.
Okay, so within our salaries, we are anticipating 3.82% increase, which, again, falls in line and makes sense with what we anticipated it to be. Just given the fact that we, it seems like we've negotiated with every unit there is in the past 18 months. So that's, again, right on, right on cue there. Fringes, again, this will change between now and March 24th. March 24th is the date that the health insurance figures will be finalized and presented to schools. We have preliminaries right now, hoping they go down, obviously. Debt service is locked, that will, that will not change. That'll be the number you see on the final budget. BOC's, again, just anticipating expenditures through BOC's. Transportation, that is another one that could and likely will change once contracts and understanding who needs to be transported where will happen. Again, I'm pretty confident that Ted and I can have that conversation when he returns to us before that March 28th. So again, just putting it up in the form of a bar, what does it look like? Again, you see slight increase in salaries because of the negotiations that have happened. You're going to see that slight increase in fringes. The health insurance world is kind of making up for the fact that people have really started going to the doctor a lot more now because they're coming out of COVID and you're seeing health insurance costs, costs rise. Debt service, like I said, BOC's and transportation look pretty level for now. There's my pie chart to show what a majority is. Majority of our expenditures is salaries. Again, that's pretty par for the course for school operations. And here are the big five that I alluded to earlier. So I've given you a five-year history, a five-year change here, and an anticipated budget here in the yellow. Just breaking down what is making up this budget. And currently, there is our budget gap. Again, this is assuming a max tax cap being used, the 3.02%. So right now, my task is to go find in our current revenue budget, in tandem with the hard revenue numbers when they come out, I have to go find out how the expenditure budget, how can I, how, how do I eliminate $117,000 out of our expenditures to balance that out with our revenue side?
At least $117,000?
At least, yeah. That's my starting point now. So similar to last year, right? We were $1.2 million over the 4.21% tax cap. From there, we chiseled off even more to get down to that 2.92.
Just a question on a timeline. The state doesn't have to have a budget till April 1st.
Correct.
And you want to meet with the finance committee March 28th?
Yep.
Are you thinking that the state will have a budget before April 1st?
If they have it out, I, I, again, it's, at this point, it's just plug in or and hit update on my end because everything's kind of set. It's the way I have the sheet set up. If they don't, then we'll meet shortly after.
Okay.
Yeah, just, I'm not going to meet with you guys until we have those numbers up, for sure.
But you want us to, April 6th, you said, right?
If we can, if the governor's.
Because we can't wait. Our next meeting, you said, is too late?
It's the 20th, yeah. The, April 18th is the last day because it's three, you have to have an adopted budget three days before the, the military ballots go out on the 21st.
Mrs. Quayle, what do you have to say for yourself?
All right, first item, 23, 24 calendar. So here's a draft calendar. Follows for the most part, both the BOC's calendar. I mentioned before and before this all began, next year's is a unique, well, maybe it's, I hope it's unique. Because they're pushing Regis exams so far into June because there's Juneteenth, there's also another holiday in June that's celebrated in New York City, so that's one less. We'll have school that day, but there won't be Regis exams that day. For that, so just, it's pushed everything out a little further in that regard. So right now, we have two conference days. Teachers, you know, always ask for two days before the kids show up. So we go to the first and the fifth. Because BOC's is only going to one, so they're starting their classes regionally on the 6th of September. Everything else kind of mirrors up as far as holidays and vacation times go. And then the last day for, for kids and adults will be June 20, Wednesday, June 26th. It's reading that. Graduation will be the 28th. Tara asked about conference days. Right now, we have four penciled in. If you want to reduce down to three, we probably suggest a limited October 20th. Because the March ones, like tomorrow, are the regional conference day, so we were a bunch, carrying the neck sucker.
I got to go to the.
In the candy bag. You know, so we have a bunch of teachers who are going off to different sites to talk to colleges and schools. Quite valuable, I think.
So, so those are not parent teachers, those are conference days, those are teacher conference days, they're not parent teachers, all four of those?
The ones that are green are the superintendent conferences.
Conference days, yes. So all four are superintendent conference days.
We have three this year. So Tara asked, can we move, we take them out, we can put it at the end of the year.
I just know how hot the school starts to get.
I thought, what are two parent teachers doing?
I mean, it all suddenly.
Well, they've done traditionally for parent conferences, we do half-days. They are, the ones that are here, they have a cross rule. If you saw the results of the survey, they definitely overwhelmingly would prefer like a noon, after lunch dismissal as opposed to having a one-hour, two-hour delay.
Babysitter.
So how many days are required? Is it 180?
You have to be a minimum, students have to be in session. They have to have 180 days of session. The conference days count if they are in session, superintendent conference days, not parent conference days. Don't ask you why, they don't, but.
Do they have how many snow days?
Eight.
Eight? That's how many we had this year, too? Other schools are out. That's why I was like, wait.
You said one left?
No, we, I mean, we only have one.
Oh.
A year.
You, you've used how many?
Five.
Five. We didn't keep track.
So what we've done in the past, and the contract kind of spells it out, if we, if we get into, well, we've talked with the association ahead of time. But if we come up into June and we have a lot of, let's say we had no snow days, right? Then we, for a better way to say, shut down earlier. We work backwards.
Okay.
I mean, the kids, we can't mess with the Regis days.
Right.
If the physics Regis sign that, then, you know, we're not, they got stuff where they can read. As far as elementary, middle, we start backtracking to reduce the day. We obviously want to stay above 180.
If you have the snow days left over you didn't use, you mean?
Yes. A couple of years in the past, we didn't have hardly any. The board, we talked about, we gave, we did a Friday before Memorial Day off.
Yeah.
Right, I think, right? It's built in somehow, you get it, you don't use. Yeah, so.
We have nothing left.
So this year, there's three, and do you, do you have a plan?
Today.
Okay. So you'll think, you'll plan if there's a couple left over?
Yeah, we'll work, yeah.
I mean, maybe they might be on Memorial Day or the Friday before, or just?
Right, or just middle, elementary earlier.
Okay.
So the April meeting will come with a recommendation for the council. This, the Juul settlement, we're just getting a lock-in of $8,300. Obviously, on the news, I'll try to dig out. I was hoping for a little bit more, but it's, it's all based on a formula. We were part of a class action suit, so it's the entire country. You know, so it's all based pretty much on enrollment for that. So this was, I think, the minimum amount we'd like to get, so. So just, so later on, you have to sign off on it, so please get that. As far as I know, there's no strings to it, like we have to, you know, but.
I think it's.
Offer like drug education or something like that.
Right, didn't it say this and then minus attorney's fees, I think? It doesn't matter, but it may not be.
Covered, I think that's, this is what we're going to get, this is what we're going to get, it's attorney's.
There's a lot of schools on that list.
There was, but you had to sign up.
Hundreds.
In other words, a lot of schools did sign up, so. Future Drives Summit, Bart asked, we just kind of briefly talked about this a second. So I was, it was going out to Baldwin a couple of weeks ago. I meet with, with folks from across the country, talking about what's the future of education look like. And so it was, it's a rich conversation, it was a huge mix of people there. Policymakers from the federal government down to state level. I mentioned Randy Weingard was there, the head of the AFT, the Confederation Teachers Union. There was Regents there, Board of Regents were there, superintendents, NICE was there, some other representatives, et cetera. And so it was just good conversation. We toured the facilities, the classrooms there in Baltimore, too. Similar, we did our site visit the fall for that. So I just wanted to bring your attention to that because it's a conversation, we, we're trying to build momentum out of the state. Again, we're confident, or optimistic, maybe a better word, that Board of Regents, the Blue Ribbon Commission, which has been named several times, will come up with some other ideas when it comes to graduation measures besides five tests in the top June for that. So they're supposed to come out with a recommendation of fall, first recommendation to the board. So try to keep the momentum up on that, you know. I haven't heard any Regents say they're against it. I know the commissioner and chancellor has four other options to demonstrate readiness for graduation. But I think they just need to make sure, you know, they have to be legitimate options. When you have a state like New York, diverse and, you know, you got everything from New York City to, you know, Wyndham as far as size and such goes. You have to be somebody that can possibly work his knife. You have to be somebody that has to work it off, which is just, I think, switching people's style and saying, hey, P's exam does nothing or ID. Because we're still talking about the past, we're still talking about money, the kids have to pay, which is not equitable. So those good discussions align a lot of what we've been doing here locally with our readiness indicators, our dispositions, and such like that. So we're good spots, I think, moving forward, I think. Also, just piggybacking on the agenda, but I was, today is down, we're at BOC's chambers, Club of Green chambers, do a leadership class that meets all year. It's people in local businesses who, it's like leadership training. And so one, every month, they meet in a different industry or type of thing. So this month is education. So we were there, it's myself, Dr. Cruz, Gladys was there, a representative from Co. Green, and a board member from Chatham, and a person from preschool were there to answer questions from the group in the leadership class like that. This kind of, I brought this up, it was overwhelming, supported by those folks and what we're doing here. They appreciate it. There are a couple of them living in our district that were there as well. So interesting conversations we had, good, good stuff in that regard, so. Questions? This is real, my correctional facilities community outreach to teach. Well, generally, each year, two correctional facilities get together and have a, like get together with local community folks, leaders. Nice, that was just recently. I shared my updates to you that, like many places, they are, have many unfilled positions in both facilities. At all spots, not just COs, but in their commissaries, maintenance, they are significantly understaffed in some areas like that. Which is a ripple effect on people who are still there, you know, double shifts, overtime, that kind of thing. And so they're staying, you know, same stuff a lot of places, they're staying in that regard, so. They talked about their programs there, where they have what we might consider like CTE programs that they have for the prisoners there. Green County, as they're, they're on their way out, so to speak, after they've done their time there. So they're trying to create some trades and some skills when they leave, hopefully productive numbers of society when they leave here. So it's good to see those things.
In terms of space, what, what's the percentage of utilization of the space, those numbers? Do you have any idea?
I don't know, in that, it was interesting, there's a Green County superintendent there, he was mentioning, because they're building a whole new. I don't know, in that, it was interesting, there's a Green County superintendent there, he was mentioning, because they're building a whole new block, you know, but their, their, their numbers are down significantly. Both, both places, you know, significantly down the last several years. That's a good thing, you know, I would hope, you know, and I mean, you know, I just say, I was like, you know, it's our job to hopefully make, take them out of business, because our kids could graduate, and be productive after they graduate here, but. So, yeah, they're both down significantly enrollment lines in each of the prisons. One is, I forgot to put right in front of me, five hundred dollars a thousand. But yeah, but it's just, that event of the works for so long, it's happening. Okay, so March twenty eighth training, so, you know, we committed to adding and providing additional training to help our staff, make kids feel better supported and feel that they belong in our schools. Carrie, we've been working to try to coordinate days, times, et cetera. People are booked, for a better way of saying it, we've already had Auburn in once, they did a session with our aides and assistants. I guess we're trying to get them in again to do the entire staff. Right now, they're only time is available coming up, would be March twenty eighth, but in the morning. So, going back to the survey, we know parents don't like one hour delays and two hour delays. So, if we can't do the twenty eighth, then what we suggest is, we just try to get them on a calendar as soon as we can, for an afternoon, and when again, that would be potentially a half day. It's not right now on the calendar, so. Asking the board for your opinion on this.
My concern was that that number was really high for, like, or, I guess, the number was really, yeah, the number was really low for the amount of people that said they liked.
Right.
What I could do delays, so that was my concern.
This is just, like, for this year, I mean, we are already looking to book, for a better way of saying, dates next year, to have regular trainings throughout next year.
I just worry that we've.
Try to catch up now.
We've said in the media now that this is going to be our response to the Facebook posting, and I, we already had a staff person write to us and imply that we're not paying attention to that. So I don't want to have us in that position, literally. And if it, I wouldn't want to put it out too, too far, because we're, we're on a little bit of a limb. Because this is like, we can't have anything else similar occur, and then we haven't done this.
Right.
You know, because then we're not looking too good there.
And we also are attempting to work, do some stuff with NICE, because they offer training.
Yeah, yeah, so I don't know how you, how you can get it done, but I think it should be done pretty soon.
Sooner than later.
Yeah.
I was just saying, unless you reach out and see if they can do an afternoon, and soon.
Well, I did, the reason they can squeeze in this morning is because they can do it before they go to another place for the day.
Leave that one booked, and then see if you can squeeze something in where it could be a half, because a half day sounds more fulfilling than an hour before work, like, coming quick, like, we're gonna do something quick before.
Right.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Optically, it sounds like we're doing more to do a half day training, but you don't want to cancel the, the hour one, and then have them say, well, we can't do anything until June or next year or something, so.
That's a great strategy, yeah. Even if it's just an hour, at least it's, something's been done. But the half a day looks like we're more.
Serious.
It's not like we're just giving you lip service.
Take that and spend some time with it.
Yeah, right.
It's teacher, remember, for the rest of the afternoon, which also is an easier thing for people to say, well, I have to take a half day, rather than have to figure out how to
And somehow, if we, because I know you've been working on it, but if the staff didn't know it, then, or maybe, I don't know, there was, I don't know if they didn't pay attention to the vehicle that said it, but then people make assumptions, and then tell other people their assumption is that we're not paying attention to it, so I don't want, so I don't know what the vehicle is for getting, like, this is the training that you're gonna get, you know? So that they know something's coming, or this is what we're working on, or this is our intent.
And this is the second one, so it's a follow up from the first?
Well, the first one, we had just a pair of professionals, aides and assistants.
At both, at all the schools?
K twelve, yeah.
Well, I'll throw out, I'm trying to think.
I know, yeah, I know.
So I, I can throw out the one thing, and Ted, we'll be back in on, on Monday, but I sent him some emails, because at first we were like, couldn't we possibly?
I can answer that.
Yeah, just to look like, and he just said that would be very difficult. But then I thought, what if just the middle school, high school got a two hour delay, and then the elementary had no delay at all? Because the elementary had no delay, their kids, because the presentation is gonna be from eight, ten to nine. If we had the elementary kids come in roughly around the same time, we might shift it by like five or 10 minutes, but they'd come in at their regular time, which is around nine o'clock. But if, then the buses have to go back out, they need an hour. So if the high school had a two hour delay, their kids would be coming in at ten. But that's having the older kids have a two hour delay, but then the younger kids, which for most parents are the bigger issue, would have no delay at all. Let's throw that idea out there.
Have we?
So kind of flip flop.
Have we provided in the past, if there's a delay like that, that's for something that's school related? Obviously, you're switching it, so high school, most of those kids can stay home by themselves, but like the fifth and sixth graders, if they can't, like? Do we, have we provided? Like someone in the school?
We've only ever done that on half days, and the only issue there would be that those, those people, whoever you picked to do it, wouldn't be able to participate, unless we hired somebody retired, or or you have the aides that you trained previously, like, because they haven't done it for you.
And how far are they booking for a half a day training?
I honestly didn't ask for the full half a day, other than that, I did ask them about the May sixteenth, which they haven't gotten back to me. They have like three other people asking for it, so they had to kind of see where they landed with the other people, because that was the other half day we had on the calendar. I asked for that two thirty timeframe for an early dismissal, but I can go back for a full half day.
Is this the only company you're talking to?
I reached out to NICE, and they have nothing, they're very, very popular. So I don't know if anybody knows about Third Rivers, or they only do it every day. I know.
Well, Northern Rivers does diversity training, and I see Questars using them in your thing, so that's another.
That's funny, because the offer is through Questar, they're using Northern Rivers, but.
There's, yeah, that's up. We had, during our superintendатель summit, we had a couple companies, for a better word, producing work with us, so. So, the first up, are you okay with the flip flop, have a two hour delay in middle school, high school, March twenty eighth? Let's try to get a half day well set up.
Yeah, I.
That sounds.
I think that's a good way to. Yeah, I think, and I think that most is the elementary parents.
And we'll get something arranged for our younger middle school kids, if parents need to come along.
Thank you. So that would be everybody then, is that what you're planning?
Yeah, so that, the twenty eighth, all staff would be part of that.
Well, let's look at the childcare, let's see what we can get.
I don't, I wouldn't think it'd be a lot, but.
You want to all look at?
Hannah will hang out with some fifth and sixth graders.
You know what, actually? I wonder if we could have honor society kids do it? We've done that in the past for like a strategy night, just had high schoolers come down.
They probably need some tutoring hours for their NHS.
It would just be fifth and sixth graders.
Parent community council, met recently, and kind of folks there, so the topic for that night is parent engagement, right? So, we talked about what parent engagement looked like, et cetera, and then they broke into groups, they came up with strategies that the district could implement to improve or increase parent engagement. So here's the ones they came up with, food, just have food, you're doing something, have food with people, right? All speakers put that. And this one is the only one, there's a laundry list, and I'll, we'll share them out, there's still a sharp paper, we gotta get it typed up, but, but these are the main ones. So, they voted on, after we had all the lists, they were then able to go and rank the top three. So phone calls, not emails. Talk about their list. So, so that was, they actually came up this morning with the chamber thing, the parents are talking about communication, phone calls instead of emails, and our principals are working on that, and our staff to do that a little more. Parent participation in wellness days and family fun nights. And then in the portal, consistency of what is used and how, when, and timely. So, they felt that a lot of folks are still struggling to navigate either a portal or a variety of portals that we have, as far as the, currently, school data, Seesaw, and Google Drive, those things. So, those are the top three, right? So, we're gonna talk about administratively, some actual steps to put these in place, right? And then the next time they meet, which is in a couple of weeks, we're gonna report back to the parent, you know, who showed up to the parent community council. And then, at the end of the previous meeting, we have them, they took all the suggestions they had come up with previously, and they got to a good issue, okay, so what's the next topic gonna be? So the next topic for this is going to be student respect and responsibility.
I'll explain, I gave everyone a copy, so for tomorrow's conference day, we are participating in the middle school and high school, and the aides and assistants are participating in the Questar Regional Staff Development Day. So this brochure has all the different things they could choose from, there are some onsite workshops, those are in the last two pages, for people to get together, so they could have signed up for that. And then there are a bunch of virtual workshops, so you can brew this at another time, because I know it's been a long form, but, but, there's a lot of terrific offerings, and students seem very excited about it. There is going to be, for the people who are here on campus, there is a keynote speaker, who's gonna just talk about positivity, so, so that's a nice fun keynote. For the elementary teachers and anyone else who wanted to come, and I spoke about this before, but here in the high school library, we're gonna have a pilot presentation. So that's gonna be an opportunity for all those teachers who are piloting, to share the data in terms of their mid-year, how it's going, and what they think of it. So anybody is welcome to come, I will absolutely share the PowerPoint, it's, a few people wanted to tweet some things, so it's gonna be hot off the press tomorrow morning, but I'll, I'll share it with, with all of you, once the PowerPoint is done. So the morning is gonna be all them taking turns presenting how it's going, the things they really like, things they're concerned about, what the data is showing thus far, again, it's just a mid-year check in. And then, the afternoon is an opportunity for them to make appointments, to go and see each other's pilots in action, and to play with the materials that we have. I'm gonna say, Shelley, that you would be welcome to come, because Cassel just called me at two fifteen today, and there's four people coming tomorrow.
Really?
To check it out.
We're doing this next year, we're not, because I had a fit. We're doing it next year.
Oh, that.
We're not doing this whole thing, we're not doing it.
Yeah, for the pilot presentation, though, there's four Cassel people who are coming over to listen to our pilot presentation.
Oh, good.
I don't know how they heard about it, I thought maybe it was.
Was it, you don't know if it's elementary, middle?
I don't know who is coming, because it was one hundred percent blast, I got the phone call, and then I ran around to, I had to go to the busy, because I just wanted to make sure. She thought that people would be comfortable with me bringing some other people in, and she said she didn't think it was easy.
Yeah, they know about it, I don't know how.
She's the building rep for security, that's why I grabbed her. But I'm excited for it.
People sign up for what they want, is that what?
Yeah, so it was, it was a little bit, a little tech glitchy, because I had to work my way through, we don't do my learning plan. And unfortunately, my learning plan and the AESOP are both belong to frontline, so there was a lot of confusion, because it is not the same login, but the screen looks exactly the same when you go to login. It is a pain in the wrist, so a lot of people, and then you had to pick things for all four classes before they let you enroll, so that was our problem, but we, we troubleshooting it, we've done it through. So, we do have, for our aides and assistants, we do have a tech support for them, so we put certain rooms out, we said, who needs support? Only one person put stuff in there, but I think more people will show up in those rooms, and we'll say, we'll be running around tomorrow in case they do, but we did make some places, because we know sometimes people don't feel as comfortable with Zoom meetings as, as other people might, so we wanna make sure there was a place for them to go and get, and get help getting in.
So this is just middle and high school?
Middle and high school, and exploratories at the elementary.
And that, they have to do all, they have to pick, they pick something for all four blocks?
They pick something for all four, yes. We do have a few spots where people are going to be doing certain things back, back here, that they need to work on, like, their tech department's gonna be training on the, as Rocco said, they're gonna be training on the house equipment, they're taking a certification program, so they'll be doing that back here. Our middle school science department is gonna work out, the science investigations are out, so they have to figure out where that corresponds in their curriculum, so they're gonna be working on that.
Is the cost of this in our cupboard, if I were?
It was forty million dollars, I'm just kidding, it was what, fifteen hundred dollars, I think, for just being?
Oh, okay.
And then we got Bosie's, I'm sure those ladies, Bosie's eight, that's really like eight hundred.
I had one sub. And all these schools are doing it?
Yep.
Well, three counties except the Cats, yeah.
There's a little salary about this over here.
I took a picture of this and sent it to my boss, and I said, this is what we're missing, and he said, next year, we'll do it next year.
All right.
Go.
Board of Amputations, if you plan on running for the board, they need to be submitted to the district office by April seventeen, five P M. Tax cap has been submitted, the tax cap number is three point zero two percent, which is a dollar amount of five hundred eighty thousand seven hundred forty nine dollars. We already talked about the reassessment equalization rate, tax rate information sheet, does anybody have any follow up questions on that? And finally, capital outlay project bid, we didn't rebid that, if you do recall, we sent that bid out a month and a half ago, two months, and all of the results came in well over the hundred thousand dollar threshold. And because of that, we denied the bids, and we worked with our architects, CS Arch, to reformulate the bid and put it back out with different specs. What we did this time was, we took out the ADA compliance for the playground over there, and so that we can focus on the door hardening and door replacements at several locations. So that is, that is our plan forward, is to at least get a vendor that can do that. Where Scott seems to think that we ran into the issue the last time was, it's hard to find a vendor that does both doors and painting, and so that drove the cost up tremendously. And then, on another note, I did hear back from Scott Wolf to today, actually, yesterday, I'm sorry, regarding Armor One, who is the, the school safety assessment company that we've been talking to, is the one that I sat through the presentation at the NISBA conference. I asked, because the cost is between twenty-three and twenty-seven thousand dollars for them to come in and do just this campus, I did ask him, is this something that would fall under a capital outlay, so that we, you know, it was aidable in some sense of, because otherwise, we'd have to pick up the full extent of that price tag. And it is not aidable under a capital outlay project. He did say that what a lot of schools do, is that they categorize it and put it as part of a capital project itself, so that it's aidable. So, bad news is, our next capital project is two years away, but we did hear, I did ask Scott, or we did have the conversation of, if we were to do it sooner and pay for it sooner, as long as it's part of our career referendum, can we, in the long run, get aid? And so we basically have to front the money in the short term, and then we can get aid on it in the long term. So we are exploring that option.
Are the doors here for the project?
Nothing too.
Or we have it ordered?
We, we can't order anything, we, everything's out the bid, because part of the, nobody's, it's, I can relate this, because I have a well in my house, right? Nobody's gonna come into my house and touch somebody else's well, they wanna install themselves, because everything's on a warranty basis, so.
I'm just hoping.
Me too.
These are the doors?
They got left open the other day again.
Cafeteria?
The ca, the C E cafeteria was. So I don't know if the janitors need to get re-sprays or something, look it up again. Somebody just walked in while stuff was going on, yeah, it was. I don't mind yelling at parents, but other people don't, no, it was ace.
And Mary said she shut them. She was the last one.
As a sidebar to that, though, both houses, when they did their state budgets, both recommended two hundred and fifty thousand dollars threshold for a capital outlay project, which was clearly a hundred thousand, so.
That'll allow us to do more with it. So, the, the argument behind putting it in the capital outlay, the threat assessment with Armor One and the capital outlay project, on the surface, it's not really adding any capital. My argument is, Scott Wolf, it's, it's leading to that, but with that, with that, we can improve our capital, but our, I didn't see it that way.
Well, the facilities committee meets Monday. So, it's, it's just, it's already mid-March.
Yep.
I just want to, we'll talk about it Monday.
Yeah, it's, I mean, according to Scott, from what I've heard, like, hardening of the doors was part of the last project, so it's, it is, it's getting there. Like, it's not like it's, we've got doors that are four hundred years old. But, and then we aren't looking to address it with this, but it's a matter of getting it done.
Yeah.
I was thinking of the security piece, too.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
If we're not going to use these people, what are we going to do?
Any other questions?
Okay.
Go to the corner.
Readiness, though, Dave, was somebody going to speak to that?
I'll pop a little bit of readiness back, because I know the aspect of it from high school and middle school, so the high school had, I think, fifteen different businesses, eighteen, that came and had like a job there recruiting. Students had resumes ready, believe at the senior and junior levels, when they were able to meet with different businesses, local businesses. At the middle school, seventh and eighth graders got a presentation from the CTE components at Questar, Don asked us the great job, presented already what those look like to seventh, eighth graders, so when they get to high school, they know like what kind of pathway they want to take, and goes from there. Fifth and sixth grade, this month, our wellbeing topic is conflict resolution, so our fifth and sixth graders worked on that, did it, fifth grade did an escape room that was really well received by the classes, and they had a really good day, had fun, learning how to resolve conflict, work as a team together. Those are my, trying to think of others. Councilors are working really hard to get the reviews done with the transition from the student management system. They're getting tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade, I believe, fifth grade and sixth grade are almost done, as well as their bringing in parents. I think Evangel just doing some reviews tomorrow, we've been virtually trying to get the process going for the rollout of it in campus. They're really hard, the council.
These are reviews for what?
For next year.
Course one?
So, parents are still invited?
Yes. Yes.
On a Google form at this middle high school, every kid got sent a Google form, and right on there it says, would you like, would your parent, like, parent or guardian attend virtually, on the phone, or in person?
I believe greater parents were invited. For our parent partner webinar series, and next Tuesday, we already have in place Gertie County Mental Health, that's going to partner with us again, coming in to a parent workshop panel of anxiety, understanding student anxiety, because of that survey that went out, that was the top response, and cyber safety and technology use. So, those are the two that we're going to focus on in April. And we'll have food, food in there, because that was part of the biggest thing.
In the evening?
In the evening, yeah.
Good.
We got all those things working for us.
Good, thank you.
Well, you heard from Mrs. Leonardo tonight on her students working with interactive course syllabus, and that was wonderful to see. The whole team has been working on Infinite Campus integration as we move over to Infinite Campus. It takes quite a while, but we've started our data processing, and we're able to see our initial site right now. So, we've been working on the initial site. We have a full training plan for the summer for teachers, and we will also have a training plan for parents for the new parent portal. So, we will invite them in, and we'll do a day, we'll do a night, we'll have it all prepared. We're working on the schedule now for staff, specifically for teachers, and we'll release that next week, so that way they can plan their summer as they wish. And then, Tech Services has been working with a few high school staff to explore different touchscreen technologies. So, as you know, we have Dell boards, but there's other things such as Promethean boards, Fiosonic, smart boards, which our smart boards are starting to age, so we really need to start thinking ahead for that. So, we've been getting owners and having a few of our teachers come out here in the secondary. So, that's exciting to see what new technologies out there.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Let me quick, I've talked enough time. I just wanted to do a couple of shout-outs, obviously, you guys see some good news. Shout-out to the high school students and staff for the play that they put on, where they want, was, was very, very well done. From what I understand, they only really worked on it for two months. They truly like died deep into it in the beginning of January, right when we get back from break, so. I thought it was very, very well done. The other thing, I went down before coming here, I went down to our art show, that is K-12, and again, great work, I saw a lot of students, especially high school students, which was nice to see down there, showing off their artwork at the Athens Cultural Center. So, very happy to see kind of what's going on on Boulders there.